Good evening, calling the Wayne Westland Community School District Board of Education meeting to order at 6:30 PM. I am going to ask that everyone please stand for the pledge and I'm going to ask Dr. Weaver to lead us in the pledge, please.
Do I do that on 78?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you so much. We are at 137.26, roll call. Mrs. Heinz, please.
Mr. Ambrose.
Present.
Ms. Abney Mitchell.
Present.
Dr. Weaver.
Present.
Ms. Heinz, present. Mr. Cox.
Present.
Mr. Rochon.
Present.
President May.
Yes, present.
7-0, we have everyone here today.
Awesome, thank you. We are now at item 138.26, adjournment to a closed session. I am looking for a motion.
Motion to accept.
Support.
Thank you. Ms. Heinz, will you please call roll?
We have Mr. Cox.
Yes.
Mr. Rochon.
Yes.
Ms. Heinz, yes. Dr. Weaver.
Yes.
Mr. Ambrose.
Yes.
Ms. Abney Mitchell.
Yes.
President May.
Yes.
Motion carries 7-0.
Thank you. We are adjourned to a closed session.
Support.
Ms. Heinz, please call roll.
Dr. Weaver, Dr. Weaver.
Here.
Mr. Cox.
Yes.
Mr. Ambrose.
Yes.
Mr. Rochon.
Yes.
Ms. Abney Mitchell.
Yes.
Ms. Heinz, yes. President May.
Yes.
Motion carries 7-0.
Thank you. Good evening again, welcome to those of you that were not here when we first started. Excited to have you with us this evening. We are now at item 140.26, recognitions and presentations. We have the district-wide communications and marketing plan presentation with Mrs. Johnson.
Lions game made a clock.
Dr. Weaver, I cut my presentation down. I cut about half the slides out when I realized my husband informed me that the Lions are on tonight.
Let's not talk about your husband, let's go.
All right.
No pressure, no pressure.
Here we go.
Question.
Okay, thank you. Questions?
Jenny, what did you say your husband's name was?
What's that?
I don't have to watch the Lions game to know what's your husband's name.
My husband's name is Kelly.
Okay.
Can you see it, Dr. Weaver?
Okay. So, the landscape of public education has changed. Back when probably, well, not this little one, most of us went to school, it was just a foregone thought that you went to the school in your neighborhood. That's what happened with public schools. That's all that was available. Now, we know that we have charter schools, private schools, other public schools, and homeschool options. And so, we as public educators have had to realize that marketing matters. So, we have to have a solid marketing plan, we have to have a solid communications plan. And I apologize, but I have the old eyes, so I will be referring to the closer version here. And what we do as part of marketing is we build our brand. I hope everybody in this room has heard, "Great futures start right here." That's our tagline. We use that a lot. We want people to know that. That's part of our branding. And the reason we do the marketing is because we value communication. We strive to have transparent and clear communication with our internal and our external stakeholders. So, when we're communicating with our staff, with our students, with our families, and with our community members, we want to be clear, we want to be consistent, and we want to be transparent. That's how we build trust in the community. Busy, sorry, I can't take that right now. And as we build that trust, we go to community engagement. You're going to see later in the presentation something great that we have coming up for community engagement. It's giving the community the opportunity to get together, to have that feeling, that neighborhood feeling, that I belong somewhere, I belong with someone. That's important, too. That's important for them building trust in us as well. And then finally, the goal, we always say in marketing, you know, what is your call to action? So, obviously, our call to action is attracting and retaining our students because parents have a choice and we want them to choose Wayne Westland. And then the district marketing goals, as you can see, it's just to increase awareness, boost engagement, and then drive enhancement. And I put it like that as a circle is because it never stops. Our marketing goals never stop and as you'll see, we have different campaigns at different times and we're in different phases for different areas of the campaign cycle. So, I told you that marketing is important, but how do we market? Most of what we do is on our website, WWCSD.net, for those of you who do not have it bookmarked. That's where all of our required information, our information that might be helpful, our hey, I don't know who to contact or what to do, where do I go? Our website is our first spot. And all of the marketing that we do create, we put our web address on there because if people aren't sure what to do or what question to have, we want to drive them to our website. Second most popular right now, love it or hate it, is social media. I will tell you, as you can see the picture there, our most recent popular engagement was our employee of the year. We may have one sitting in the room over here. We may. We get really good engagement from our parents. And in case you haven't figured it out, usually about half of our staff and our parents are on Facebook, the other half are on Instagram, everybody's on YouTube, our kids are on TikTok. Great thing starting this year that we've started with our schools is our schools are starting to create their own TikTok channels. So, in addition to the district having a TikTok channel, our middle schools now have TikTok channels. And I'm working with Ms. Dickelman at the STEM Center and the STEM Center's going to have its own TikTok channel. So, we're reaching out. When we talk about our branding, it's not just district branding, we're trying to get each school and each department to also be marketing and branding themselves as well. Then continuing down the list, we've got In Touch we use for our phone calls and texts and we try to save those for just those really important things. I really, really need parents' attention, I need staff's attention, I need to tell you there's a snow day, I need to tell you that there's a half day. Class Dojo is something that our elementary schools has been using for years and years and years. And we now introduced it this year, district-wide Dojo. So, we're going to use it K through 12. Our middle schools have been trained and they're using it right now. And the goal is by next year to have our high schools have it so that as a parent, they have one platform, one communication platform for all of their children's school. And it looks like a social media feed, if any of you have Dojo. So, you're getting, and you can instantly message your child's teacher, principal, or as the district person, I'm on there as well. So, that's what we're looking at is really going to be our preferred communications tool for how we're pushing information out to our internal audience, our parents. Digital signage, if you've been in our schools, you see that we've got TV monitors all over and we've got streaming things on it. Our schools have access to two-thirds of the screen, the district has access to one-third, and we put important information, right now we have bond information. And then, this is not everything, but last but not least, that's on new this year, is our district parent advisory team. I will start meeting with them in October. We just had, application period just closed. We have about 70 parents who are interested in being on our team, district-wide. We're going to meet quarterly. The goal is to talk to them about things happening in the district, but then also to ask them their feedback, their input about what's happening in their school, in their community, what their thoughts are. I got a little crazy at student achievement committee meeting this week and I pitched which two of our board numbers were there and liked it, that next year I'd also like to start a student advisory team because we have to get our kids' input, too. And when we're talking about marketing, our kids are a very valued voice and we want to make sure that we're including them as well. Okay, as I said, save something. What kind of information do we share? Our district programs, these are, this is not a comprehensive list of our district programs, but these are the things that are some of our more popular or fastest-growing programs. You see the Career Tech Center there? So, every student visits the Career Tech Center when they are an eighth grader, then again when they are a 10th grader. So, by the time it's time for them to schedule for high school, they've been there twice and they know what programs are available. I just want to read, because I have some facts here. From the 2021-22 school year, we had 621 students at the Career Tech Center. This year, so far, because we know kids still enroll, we have 969 students. So, we've grown over 300 students in those four years. We've been very strategic about how we are marketing that program. Now, it's important to market that internally as well as externally because our schools need to know that it's an option for our students and our parents need to know. The Career Tech Center also brings in schools from across the district. So, we also market to them to let them know. And currently, we have 384 students from other districts coming to the Career Tech Center. So, that's something where we really focus on internal and external marketing. You'll see social media ads, you'll see, some of you might have gotten emails, you'll see TikTok videos about it. And that's really working. The other pro, I mean, these are all working great, these are all amazing programs that we have, is our Innovative Academy. So, our online schooling, which now is 6th through 12th grade, continues to grow. And I just confirmed that with Ms. Swanson because she's sitting over there in the corner. And she says that by second semester, they'll probably have 75 more students. We market that, we start in the spring, marketing that, telling people, hey, if this is an option, if this is something you're interested in. They're hearing radio ads, they're getting targeted emails, we're sending postcards, we're letting our current staff know that we have online school. In addition to the in-person hybrid options that we also have at the Innovative Academy. And then, points of pride, I told you earlier, stuff like employee of the year, huge, anything that we post. Some of you might have seen last week, we had a former Wayne Memorial graduate that was racing, she was running in Tokyo, and she like made it to the world finals and she had her best-ever score. So, this is a class of 2017 graduate that is continuing to do amazing things. We share that because what do we say? Great futures start right here. She started with cross-country here in the district and now she's doing amazing things. And then the picture, our second annual Halloween trunk-or-treat is happening. Our schools are starting to send this information out. I'm posting it on social media. We had about 1,000 kids last year, we're anticipating we're going to have about the same. Wayne Memorial High School students contacted me this year and said, "We heard about your trunk-or-treat, we'd love to help. Can we please do a haunted house?" Absolutely, absolutely. And when you think of that stuff, that's community engagement. That's building, you know, that's building our community. That's letting our kids have a voice. I showed them the space they have and they're going to run with it and do whatever they want. They know it's got to be kid-friendly, they're excited. All right, recent marketing campaigns, as you walk out, and Mr. Cox, you already saw them as you walked in. We have a bond coming up in November. We've been working very hard recently to get the message out about that. You all are going to see within the next few days, if you live in the district, you're going to get a postcard. We have lawn signs out there right now. If you live in the district, please take one, two, three lawn signs to put out. We're going to have it on our signs, we're going to have social media, it's been in the school newsletters, it's in the district newsletter. That is something that we are marketing, we call it our internal and our external audience. Dr. Cost and Mr. Toko are going to our employee groups, I'm sorry, our employee groups, and they're talking to them to educate them about the bond because they know that people in the community are going to go to the people they know who work for the district. So, we're, they may not live in the district, some of our employees, but they're learning about the bond so they can answer questions. And then our external audience, every voter in the district, we want to know about it. We've gone to the senior center and talked to the seniors. We're going to some of the school PTOs and talking to them. And then we're sending direct mails out to everybody. So, that's where we marry that internal and external audience. And then iHeart Media, we're just repping up a campaign, I don't know if any of you heard it, it was out of the streaming platforms. We had four of our different staff members, pardon me, four of our different staff members record 30-second commercials talking about different aspects of Wayne Westland. Athletics, the elementary programs, our career tech program, and our middle school programs. So, that ran for four weeks just as our school of choice window was ending to try to gather up anybody who hadn't made a decision yet and might want to come to Wayne Westland. Next steps, we're going to continuing, continue our message because marketing never stops. We always have a new program coming up, we always have time to register for something else. So, we're going to continue with that. We're expanding our video storytelling. I love that our schools are embracing TikTok because frankly, the kids are going to be way better at it than Scott and I are going to be. They know the trends, they already know how to do the editing, they're like, that's perfect for them. We're going to continue to expand that. And then I mentioned the district parent advisory team, which I'm excited about, I want to hear our parents' input. And then we're going to continue targeting those high-demand programs. We know that I'm going to talk to Ms. Swanson in December about early college and getting a parent night set together and getting our students to fill those classes up, which filled with the first time we hold a parent meeting. Those classes fill. I know in December, I'm also going to talk to Ms. Broll about kindergarten roundup and young five registration because that'll be happening in March and we're going to get probably 700 to 800 kindergarten students. So, these are the kind of things that continue to happen and that's what we're going to work on. Okay, I think I did it, Dr. Weaver. I did it pretty good. Now, it's up to you guys for whatever questions you have.
Thank you, Mrs. Heinz.
I just got two, great job of your presentation.
I'm sorry, I'm coughing.
Do you need some water?
I have some and I have a cough drop.
Okay. Yeah, so I just noticed and I love it, I've been noticing like the John Glenn Athletics have their own special little like videos and stuff and it's so cool. So, I've been taking and pulling and putting it on my page because it's like real life, like the football game, you know, like the really cool, they're doing a super good job with that. And then, too, I was telling Dr. Cost, like on our school board business cards, maybe you guys can put like the points of pride on the back, like when we pass them out, we have those five points of pride. I noticed like, I think the Saginaw School District does it, so it kind of, you know, it kind of promotes the school district as well on the back of our business card.
What if instead of, I like both of those ideas, I would steal Mr. Malloy for our department because he really enjoys the social media and graphic design? What about instead of the five points of pride, because that might be really small font, we did a QR code that drove you to our points of pride on the website?
That would be nice, the QR code.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I think that would be, then bam, you could have it right there. Okay, I like that. That's excellent feedback, thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Abney Mitchell.
Yes, I just have a couple of questions myself. One of them is you said that you was the district person to be contacted on Dojo?
Mm-hmm.
So, what is your turnaround time to reply?
Oh, within 24 hours. That's our email, our Dojo, that's our social media, yes.
Yeah, and the other question is, I guess, oh, the parent advisory team, I'm excited about that. Thank you for putting that together.
I'm excited about it, too.
That's all I have.
Any other questions? Yes, Mr. Rochon.
A lot of parents and community members aren't able to make it to our board meetings. Are we looking into maybe creating a live feed so they can attend in real time?
We are. That is something that we started looking into just before Dr. Cost came and now since she's been here, I've done some research and I've shared it with her and Mr. Toko about, you know, what we need to do to get it implemented. I don't know what she has shared with you or not shared with you about it, but it is something that we're looking at.
Also, recently, last Monday, I went to a few elementary school, high school, talked to a couple of first, third, fifth graders, had a ball. And also, and some high school students at Wayne Memorial, talking to them about, you know, school lunches, it was during lunchtime, school lunches, how's the beginning of the year, kicking off with everyone. Everyone seemed really excited. How can we capture some of those students' stories? That's what we want to do.
Mrs. Marky actually sent me your schedule of when you're going to be at every school. So, you're going to have a shadow pretty soon and I'm going to start following you because it seems like you would be very comfortable in front of the camera. So, if you're already comfortable, we're going to get that when you go out and about and just capture you talking to the kids and just get that, you know, real, natural conversation kind of a thing.
I think other board members will be with me as well.
Okay. We will, anybody who wants to visit, you just let us know and we will follow you, absolutely.
Why don't you share your schedule? Oh, I'm, I'm so sorry.
Any other questions or comments? Mrs. Johnson, I just want to say thank you so much for your presentation. It was very informative. I do have a quick follow-up question in regards to the business for the CTE program.
Sure.
Do we offer external visits, like do we offer it to other schools to bring in their eighth graders or their 10th graders?
We do, that just has to be arranged with Mrs. Bigelow.
Okay.
To come in, absolutely.
Thank you so much. Next on our agenda, we have item 141.26, citizens' comments in regards to agenda items. Do we have any, Mrs. Heinz?
These look like to be non-agenda items.
Thank you. We are now at item 141.26, I'm sorry, 142.26, consent agenda. I am looking for a motion, also want to make sure everyone saw the updated item to the consent agenda.
Yes, move approval with the update.
Thank you. Mrs. Heinz, will you please call roll?
Mr. Ambrose.
Yes.
Abney Mitchell.
Yes.
Dr. Weaver.
Yes.
Ms. Heinz, yes. Mr. Cox.
Yes.
Mr. Rochon.
Yes.
President May.
Yes.
7-0, motion carries.
Thank you. We are at 143.26, Board of Education Committee reports. Mr. Ambrose with the finance and facility report, please.
So, the finance and facility committee meeting was called to order on September 11th at 5:30 PM with the following in attendance, myself, Ms. Lawanda Abney Mitchell, Dr. Cost, Ms. Jewel Claire, Mr. Darryl Beebe and Ms. Kim Marky, with Ms. Melanie Heinz called in because, because of her schedule. We discussed the following items that are being brought before the board tonight for our approval. First, we talked with Mr. Beebe, who proposed purchasing eight MacBook Pros with Apple Care for the digital media class at our Career Technical Center. The total cost for these eight MacBooks would be $33,344 with the funds coming from our CTE equipment grant. He stated that this purchase is utilizing sole source instead of a competitive bid process and all licenses on our old equipment would be transferred to the new equipment using Moizle. The second item we talked about was brought to us by Ms. Claire presenting on behalf of Mr. Montane. She shared a quote for the purchase of some solar-powered speed limit signs. Cost for these signs would be roughly about $88,000 if memory serves. For reference, these signs are identical to the signs that are just outside this building, Marquette in front of John Glenn High School. It has the current speed limit posted with a digital display showing the speed of your vehicle that it is currently traveling at. It will ask you to slow down if you are over the speed limit. It'll say thank you if you are actually doing the speed limit or traveling a little under. These signs are solar-powered and will be installed by your maintenance department at all buildings in an effort to improve pedestrian safety at all of our buildings. And the funds will be covered by our sinking fund. We then heard from Ms. Claire who reviewed our state aid report, the check register and investment reports. As of the end of August, the district has received all the state aid for our fiscal year of '25, '24, '25. We will be receiving no state aid for the month of September. State aid will start in October and Ms. Claire also stated that the bond account was exhausted and all remaining items that were left from the bond that are currently being completed will be paid for from the sinking fund. Also, all the arbitrage fees for the excess bond, excessive bond earnings have been paid and we saw an increase in our investment accounts during this time. We discussed, had a discussion around the lack of a state budget and concerns on if the current impasse will cause programs to be cut. Ms. Claire said she expects the state to have a budget and funds to be deposited in October. But if that does not happen, we are in a good position to move forward. We had some comments from Dr. Cost, Ms. Abney Mitchell, Ms. Heinz and myself, and we adjourned the meeting at 6:06 PM.
Thank you so much. Dr. Weaver, policy and procedure.
Thank you, Madam President. The committee met on September 11th, 2025. We talked about, one thing that was brought up was live streaming our Board of Education meetings. We're currently looking at our legal, or to our legal team to give us their thoughts about that. The team agreed to do yet another cell phone survey. It has been sent out and has been collected and we'll be reviewing that tomorrow. I say we, I'll be reviewing it tomorrow. And after our October meeting, to get everything finalized, we'll be ready to present to the board for any questions and to put it in motion to make it our policy. All the schools already have their own cell phone policy, so there's no reason for us to talk about, you know, talk about discipline or anything like that because the buildings handle that on their own. So, this will be an overarching policy that very simply says, put away all of your electronics during class time. That's, that's what we're asking. We shared comments and also I just wanted to say very quickly that the three committee chairs have talked about getting together once a month and aligning the committee work to enhance what needs to be done in policy committee, all three committees and how they can work together. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Rochon, student achievement committee, please.
Thank you, Madam President. Our student achievement committee report, September 17th, 2025, committee reviewed the following. Curriculum Read 180 and Math 180, adopted in 2022 with strong PD and consultant support. Board requested student data and feedback as programs continue. We also discussed grading policy rollout reporting by coaches and principals. Parent sessions will happen at conferences with a handout and social media communication. Goal is for fairness and accuracy. We also discussed parent advisory group. We had over 74 applicants received, selected by a rubric with one to two reps per school. First meeting, I believe, will be October 16th. Group will help establish a student advisory committee this year, hopefully this year, next year. We also talked about student board representation. We discussed, discussions was held to be revised in November and brought to the full board in December. In additional notes, focus on student well-being, connecting achievement to purpose, a strong parent-staff engagement. Lunch visits with students have begun. Next committee meeting, we will, it will coincide with the district trunk-or-treat in October.
Thank you. Mr. Rochon. We are now at item 144.26, review and approval of business and finance. First up, we have a recommendation from Dr. O'Feely to purchase iMac computers.
Thank you, President May. As Darryl Beebe, Executive Director of Technology and Innovation, presented at the September 11th, 2025 Finance Committee meeting, the district is seeking approval to purchase eight MacBook Pros, silver computers with a three-year Apple Care Plus for schools. The new MacBooks are for digital and media classes at the William D. Ford Career Technical Center. These upgraded devices are essential to support the advanced software.
These upgraded devices are essential to support the advanced software and performance needs of the film and media program. I recommend that the Board of Education approve the purchase of eight MacBook Pros in the amount of thirty-three thousand, three hundred forty-four dollars with the Apple Care included. This will be a sole-source purchase. This purchase will be funded by the CTE equipment grant and will have no impact on the general fund. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you. Looking for a motion?
Move approval.
Support.
Support.
Thank you. Discussion?
Quick discussion. Uh, with those Macs, do we, um, turn in our old MacBooks or how does that work? Or do we just get new ones?
Uh, good evening to the Board. Um, so, a number of the, the older MacBook and MacBooks are now, you know, they're pretty much out of service right now. So, there are a few that are still working. Um, but these are gonna pretty much, uh, impact the remainder of the class. They still use the ones that are, you know, but once again, if we got a MacBook that's like five years old, it's pretty much ancient at this point and it's not being supported, uh, by Mac, so, yep.
Any other discussion? Thank you, Mrs. Heinz, will you call a vote, please?
Mr. Cox?
Yes.
Mr. Rochon?
Yes.
Ms. Heinz, yes, Dr. Weaver?
Yes.
Mr. Ambrose?
Yes.
Ms. Abney Mitchell?
Yes.
President May?
Yes.
Seven zero, motion carries.
Thank you. Next, we are at the recommendation to approve the purchase of building signs, building speed signs. Mr. Choco?
As Jewel Claire, uh, presented at the September Finance Committee meeting, I'm requesting approval to purchase, uh, solar-powered speed signs, uh, speed limit signs by Elan City. Elan City was recommended and approved by the City of Westland and has provided a delivery timeline that will allow our maintenance department to complete the installation in a timely manner. Uh, this purchase will be made through the Sourcewell Consortium in charge of the sinking fund and any, in an amount, uh, not to exceed eighty-five thousand. Uh, I am recommending the Board of Education approve this purchase.
Move approval.
Support. Discussion?
Yes.
Yes, Mr. Rochon?
Um, I'm, we were talking to, um, Mayor Wayne.
Yep.
We were talking about signs for, in the Wayne area.
Yep.
Is there, do you have?
We're doing it there, too.
Okay.
So, every one of our buildings, um, will have the speed limit signs. So, I've talked with him, with, uh, um, the police chief in Westland, the police chief in Wayne. So, we're all on board. This has been, uh, a year in the making. Uh, we just wanted to figure out, um, now it's just a matter of where they're gonna be located. The location is key and it's also, what we didn't know ahead of time was that we have to pull permits because they have to be installed. Sometimes they'll be installed. We're trying to get them on the school property, but some of them, the best placement might be in an easement or in a, uh, community member's, uh, situation. So, that's where we're at with it. We shouldn't have any issues with any of that moving forward. Um, the goal is to have all of those speed limit, speed limit signs in before Thanksgiving.
Oh, great, great.
And I think they really work.
They do. They do. Mr. Choco, I don't even know if I made this up in my mind, so I'm gonna ask this question.
You might have.
Was there a conversation ever about speed bumps or something in Wayne?
Yeah, we, they.
Okay, so I didn't make that up.
So, if you've been by, God, we're, um, three of our elementary buildings already have those. Um, so, yeah, they, um, that's what we kinda tasked the city with.
Okay.
Um, we, we said we would go through and, and get the, the signs, but we tasked the city, especially the City of Wayne, um, with the speed limit bumps, which will even, I mean, it'll make it even stronger, um, for, for these speed limit signs if you got the bumps, so.
Absolutely. Okay, thank you for your work with that. Thank you to both, um, both city mayors for their support in getting this done because we know we've had several incidents and just being able to show that, um, not just show, but that we are actively doing something to keep our kids safe. So, thank you for that. Mrs. Heinz, will you call a roll for us?
Ms. Abney Mitchell?
Yes.
Mr. Ambrose?
Yes.
Ms. Heinz, yes. Mr. Rochon?
Yes.
Mr. Cox?
Yes.
Dr. Weaver?
Yes.
President May?
Yes.
Seven zero, motion carries.
Thank you, we are at one four five point two six, review and approval of human resources. Dr. Opheli, and I believe our guest is here.
He is. Thank you, President May. I would like to make a recommendation for Mr. Paul Shanks to be our next John Glenn High School Assistant Principal. He is in attendance. Um, he comes to us with a bachelor's degree from Eastern Michigan University, a master's degree from Eastern Michigan University. He holds a professional administrator certificate along with an elementary and secondary, or secondary admin K-12 certificate. Um, he's previously worked with Pontiac, uh, Academy as a high school social studies teacher, Brighton Area Schools as an alternative high school social studies teacher, Brighton Area Schools as an alternative high school restorative practice coordinator, Halt Public Schools as a restorative practice coordinator, and most recently, East Lansing Public Schools as a district behavior system specialist. And at this time, I'd like to make a recommendation to the Board for Mr. Paul Shanks to be our next John Glenn High School Assistant Principal.
So, move.
Support.
Discussion?
I just wanna say, um, I think this is fabulous, all those qualifications. This would be perfect for John Glenn, so I'm just really excited at this particular hire.
Thank you. Miss, any others? No, Mrs. Heinz, will you please call?
Yes. Um, Dr. Weaver?
Yes.
Uh, Mr. Cox?
Yes.
Mr. Ambrose?
Yes.
Mr. Rochon?
Yes.
Ms. Abney Mitchell?
Yes.
Ms. Heinz, yes, President May?
Yes.
Motion carries seven zero.
Thank you. I was gonna say, I'd like to take a moment to congratulate Mr. Shanks. Welcome to the team and then give you an opportunity to say anything you would like to say.
Thank you, good evening, everybody. Um, I'm, uh, excited to be here, wanna just extend a thank you to the Board for, uh, for your, um, uh, the opportunity to join the team here. I spent last week kinda getting my feet wet at John Glenn. It was, uh, it was kinda like drinking from a fire hose at times, but it was great to meet a lot of great, uh, students and staff and talk with some parents there, so, I'm excited to be here and looking forward to the rest of the year to come.
Thank you, we are excited to have you, welcome. Congratulations. And next on the agenda, we have one four six point two six, the review and approval of Board of Education, um, a recommendation, which each of you have a copy of and I will read it, to adopt the fiscal year twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six School A Budget Delay Resolution. Whereas Michigan's Constitution requires the Michigan Legislature and Governor to pass an annual School A Budget for the exclusive purpose of funding public education. And whereas Governor Gretchen Whitmer signed Public Act one six zero into law in twenty nineteen, which states that the legislature must pass and present general appropriation bills for the upcoming fiscal year to the Governor on or before July one. And whereas local school districts in Michigan are required by law to pass their own budgets for the upcoming school year by July one. And whereas the Michigan Legislature has failed to meet their July one legal deadline to pass a School A Budget appropriation bill or make any meaningful progress toward doing so. And whereas the Wayne Westland School Board was forced to adopt a budget for the twenty-five, twenty-six school year without key funding information due to the ongoing lack of a state budget. And whereas the fiscal year twenty-five, twenty-six School A Budget continues to be delayed by political battles that are unrelated to school funding or the needs of our students. And whereas the ongoing delay in funding certainty has already impacted our ability to best plan for the support our students need and deserve in the upcoming school year. And whereas every day the budget continues to be delayed by lawmakers will only worsen the negative impacts on our schools, staff and students this fall and beyond. And whereas comments by lawmakers that suggest the School A Budget can or should wait for other budget agreements to fall into place ignore the critical needs of our students. Therefore, be it resolved, the Wayne Westland School Board is urging state lawmakers to immediately pass a spending bill that fully allocates the entirety of funding meant for our schools in a manner that supports the needs of each and every student in Michigan. And so, before we, um, go, I'm sorry, there's one more part. But, I'm sorry, be it resolved further, the Wayne Westland School Board is affirming that School A funding should not be tied to any other budget deals, including ongoing talks about world funding. Now, with that, before we vote, I would like to ask Mrs. Claire to just kinda share with us how not having a, um, state budget impacts Wayne Westland schools.
Um, thank you. Um, even though Wayne Westland Community Schools has a healthy fund balance at this time, the lack of a state budget and a school aid budget is causing anxiety for our employees, school officials, students and families. We are making contingency plans using our best guesses of what might happen. We are estimating cash flow issues in October and possibly beyond if we don't get state aid in the coming months. We are estimating what our borrowing cost would be or our lack of interest income on our funds that we were expecting to be invested. Um, and this will affect our budget for the rest of the year. We are delaying programs and purchases if we can until more information is known about funding. We're re-examining any new hiring until we know where our funding stands. We're worried about not being able to provide free meals to all of our kids and estimating the cost of the general fund if this is necessary for us to pick that cost up. We're upset that the School Aid Fund might be used for funding other things other than the K-12 education. We're worried about cuts in federal funding and/or the delay of this federal funding as much of it comes through the state. These funds are used for most of our, for our most vulnerable children. School leaders are focusing on contingency planning instead of student success. Please pass a responsible budget for school districts so we can go back to our focus, children. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you. So, I'm looking for a motion.
So, move.
Support.
Discussion?
Um, I'd like to do a discussion.
Sure.
Um, I definitely like, Miss, we're, uh, bringing this to the attention because we are in the business of serving children. And with programs being cut, even with, uh, food, when we were at the legislative luncheon the other day, we found out that Wayne Westland has the second highest homeless rate. So, it's actually went up from the last time, it was five, so, that's pretty scary. So, there's a lot of kids coming to school hungry. And then that even affects with attendance, you know, different things as well. So, we wanna make sure our kids are productive. So, um, I really like this, um, proclamation here and I think it's important that people need to take care of our children 'cause that's most important.
Thank you. Anyone else? Hi, Mrs. Heinz, will you please call for a vote for this?
Ms. Abney Mitchell?
Yes.
Mr. Ambrose?
Yes.
Ms. Heinz, yes, Mr. Rochon?
Yes.
Mr. Cox?
Yes.
Dr. Weaver?
Yes.
President May?
Yes.
Motion carries seven zero.
Thank you. Next, we have, um, two items. One is a first read and the other is more or less for, um, it's not a, we don't have to vote on it, but it's just, um, to make sure everyone is aware. So, the first one is the adoption of Board Book discussion. So, we had some information sent out to us, um, via email where you had the opportunity to take a look at Board Book. I believe we've had Board Book in the past, which is the electronic version of, um, receiving our board documents and being able to take notes into that document. And so, at this point, I just wanted to open the floor for any discussion around it. I know we've, I'm sorry, I said I was opening the floor, but then I kept talking. We, um, received, um, iPads this school year to utilize. We've had a couple of board members who have asked for the packets to be, um, electronic versus receiving them in paper copies, so this is why we are at this point. I just wanted to share that before we open for discussion. And you all also receive the quote for Board Book, which is about three thousand dollars. If my memory serves me correctly.
I don't think, just my opinion, it doesn't provide anything that, that, uh, I'm really interested in. We, we did use it for a time and we spent money on it and it didn't do anything for us. Everybody still wanted, most people wanted a paper copy. And, you know, it's something you could write notes on it and I, I don't, I see people looking at their phone in here. I don't have any service in here. Uh, I don't know, I like a paper copy. I, I don't just look at it when I'm here and I always have my iPad with me, you know?
So, and it might be a, a generational thing, but at work, we've moved away from, from basically paper and, and have gone completely electronic in terms of our distribution in, in materials. Um, all our presentations are electronic, our reports are electronic. Um, it's, it's rare anyone goes to a meeting where we actually print something out and so.
Well, maybe just until us old timers are done.
No.
And, and was that an employee, was that an employee request or was that management telling?
Actually, it's, it's been more employee at, at Ford, um.
Do you, are you, uh, do you do it after work? Uh, do you maintain contact with all your electronics after work hours?
Uh, unfortunately, some of us are required to.
There you go.
Others?
Me back? Um, so, I've used it with, um, sitting on a committee with M.A.S.B. and I really like it. I like just having access to the board packet electronically because sometimes having to wait for the paper copy, being able to get to it, to look at it, it just is easier to have it on a device. So, that's what, I like it personally that way, to be able to take my notes that way. Um, 'cause sometimes it's confusing when we get here and you bring your board packet, but then you got a new board packet 'cause something has been updated. So, then your notes are on the board packet you started on and now you have this. So, for me, I personally like the idea of, um, having electronic copy. But, like I said, this is a first read and so we wanted to be able to have this discussion at the table. I don't know if anybody else has anything they wanna share?
I just have one thing, I kinda like both options. I'm kind of a paper person 'cause a lot of times, like, um, I actually keep a lot of these different presentations I like to have on hand 'cause I like to show them to people sometimes, so. I mean, I like both, but I do like, I mean, I definitely do the word, but I sometimes like a paper copy for my personal.
I just look at it like so much paper and the money that we can save because most of the time, like today being one, we get a packet delivered to us and then we come back in to the board meeting, we have another packet here. So, this is a lot of excess paper to me that costs money to print. That's why I like it. I mean, I'm not an electronic person neither, I have bad eyesight, but, you know, if it's required, it's required. If it's an option, it's an option.
Thank you. Anyone else? All right, at this point, we will table it and it'll be on our, um, agenda for October for vote. Next, we have a, um, the timeline we shared with you for the superintendent search. So, just wanted to make sure everyone saw that and open the floor for any discussion or concerns with any of the dates that have been selected.
Just a quick question, if I might. Will this be added to our, um, calendar?
Yep, once we say that we're good with it, yep.
Okay, I for one am good with it, thank you.
Any concerns? Nope. All right, so this will be added to our calendars and that now moves us to.
And then shared with the public, correct?
Yes, yes, I'm so sorry, most definitely shared with the public. I'm sorry, that was not a secret at all. No, we don't need a second read, we don't have to vote on it so we can go out to the public after this meeting. At the meeting? Yep, this was just a conversation so that everybody knew and everybody was good with it. Um, and I can actually even kinda just share. Um, we have already established November eighth as a special board meeting where we will, um, meet with the search firm M.L.I. to gather input, establish the parameters for the search and agree upon a timeline. Um, December first through the fifteenth is when we will begin to collect stakeholder feedback to develop a candidate profile, create and finalize a position announcement. So, you will see, um, information coming out for the community to be involved in that process between December first and the fifteenth. January twelfth through February twenty-third is when the position will be posted. Um, I'm sorry, to be posted January twelfth and remain open through February twenty-third. Um, beginning on Monday, March second is when we will begin to take a look at the applicants and make a determination of which candidates we will interview. First round interviews will be conducted March sixteenth through the eighteenth. On March nineteenth is when the finalists will be selected. March twenty-fourth through the twenty-fifth will be finalist interviews. Um, on Thursday, March twenty-sixth, there will be a district tour and meet and greet. So, then that way, the community can come in and meet the candidates, the final candidates. And of course, the community is a part of, they are a part of the first round interviews as well as the second round interviews. That is all done publicly. Monday, April sixth is when we will select the new superintendent. And then, um, we are looking at a date to determine the board action to hire the new superintendent. And of course, the new superintendent will start July first, okay? But this will be published for everyone to see. And with that being said, we are now at one four seven point two six, citizens' comments on.
Did I miss something? Can you just say to our first, twenty twenty-six?
You did say July first, twenty twenty-six.
I didn't say that. What did I say?
Say the twenty twenty-six.
July first, twenty twenty-six. I'm confused on what that was about. Okay. So one four seven point two six, citizens' comments on non-agenda items, please.
I have two. It looks like it, Ms. Melinda Harris.
Hi there. This won't be my first meeting. Everybody knows that. And that's why it's so great that we're getting this District Parent Advisory Committee going so we can get more parents involved. So I am leaving tomorrow, and a lot of people know that my brother's really sick, so I'll be gone for some time. But I met Ms. Jenny Johnson in the hallway, and I said, even if I'm not selected, I really would enjoy being part of it. So she's going to keep me in the loop on that. So one of the main reasons I came here tonight is to acknowledge the Board of Education, what a great job they're doing. It's always nice to get compliments, you know, instead of hearing bad stuff from people. And I really appreciate the meetings that you had last year that unfortunately I missed. The meet and greets with food, I thought that was a really great idea. And I also want to thank, you know, Jenny Johnson for what she's doing with that new committee. I heard there's progress on checking into the Code of Conduct District Handbook, which Shannon and whoever else in the district is involved in that. I really appreciate that because especially with elementary kids, you know, the terms assault and battery, I'm just not comfortable with that. And the fifth grade teachers at Wildwood are doing a really great job getting the kids ready for the fifth grade camp. And it's, you know, hard for us parents, you know, we're struggling with apron strings. I mean, my son's never been on a trip alone for three days, so I think a lot of us parents are trying to get through that, you know. And I was pretty impressed because my son's a paleo eater, and if he just has toast and water all week, it's not going to be a good diet. But Mr. Carney told me they will accommodate children. If I say he eats hamburgers or he eats chicken, give him a list and they'll take care of him and make sure he gets fat, so I think that's really great. So one thing I want to kind of set out there, you know, anybody, any administrators, any principals, things that I've, I've been witnessing out in the community, is that parents like to gossip and they like to say things about other parents, and it's kind of not fair to the parents that are being talked about. So I'm asking everybody in the district, anybody involved that's hearing different things from parents to kind of like keep that in mind that. So two sides to every coin. And then I'm really looking forward to meeting our new Assistant Superintendent, Dr. Jefferson. Hi. And I appreciate Ms. Cost covering for us. That's really nice of you to get a new superintendent. And I want to thank two ladies that have had children, or at least one, Kim in the district, for attending the meeting tonight and getting involved. And I also want to thank Josh Powell that's here to support me. And just want to let out, and I don't know if everybody's a believer, which I don't judge, that I can do all things through Christ that strengthens me, and thank you so much.
Thank you.
We have another one. I think is it Eleanor, is it Trushen?
My teacher is helping my mom, and she has a very sick brother, and he's going to Arizona tomorrow. And she volunteered at the music classroom for, for about two years.
Anything else you want to say?
Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we are at item one four eight point two six, interim superintendent's comments. Dr. Cost?
I want to thank the board for some very constructive dialogue tonight in our closed session about the, the goals that will be before me for the year. I'm excited to share them with my team and, and get to work because I, I truly think is going to foster the learning starts right here. So that's exciting. I also have some other fun news to share. I was at the superintendent's conference last week, and three organizations donated money for scholarships. So the first, and so I, on the first day, I, I did a QR code and signed up. So on the final day, they called the first district, and it wasn't us. They called the second district, it wasn't us. The third district was Wayne Westland. I've been told I ran down like it was the Price is Right. Because I was so excited to get a thousand dollar scholarship for one of our students this year. So I will turn it over to the scholarship committee to take it from here. But just what a great way to put Wayne Westland on the map in front of seven hundred and twenty superintendents and assistant superintendents, so.
Thank you. Thank you. All right. Next, we have one four nine point two six, review and recommendations, Board of Education. Let's start with Dr. Weaver.
I have nothing to say.
Mr. Rashawn?
I have nothing to say.
Let's keep it going. Let's keep going.
Mr. Anfretz?
I'm going to say something real quick. I am looking forward to this Friday. It's the Wayne-John Glenn game. I'm going to do something that's going to be awfully hard for me, but the first half, I'm going to be sitting on the John Glenn side. And then on the second half, since I know everyone at Wayne, I can sneak across the field because they try to keep both sides separated and sit in the Wayne side. I'm looking forward to seeing, hearing both, both bands play. I've had a chance to actually see both marching band shows to this point this year, and they are both great. If you get a chance, October sixth, both bands will be playing here at John, right across from us at John Glenn for the MSBOA Festival.
Thank you. Mrs. Abney Mitchell?
We are tag team. I'm John Glenn. I got two grandsons on John Glenn. So when you go to John Glenn, I go to Wayne Memorial, DMV is switched, okay?
Okay.
I'm just thankful, you know, I want to say thank you to our interim superintendent, you know. She said that, they said she was running like she was on the Price is Right. She has been running like that since she's been in the district. And I appreciate the work that she's doing. But the one thing I appreciate more than anything is the openness. You know, for her to want to share what's going on in the district and giving it to us straight instead of holding it back. We've received information that I've been trying to get for the three years that I've been on the board, so I thank you for that. I'm excited about the Parent Advisory Board. And I'm just thankful to our committee leaders, you know, the committees that they lead. You know, I don't say it all the time, but I appreciate the work that you guys do. And, and thank you. Thank you. And I appreciate the whole board, you know. I got a whole list of stuff to say, but you know, I'm not going to be cruel to my fellow board members. So, go Lions!
Thank you. Mrs. Hines?
I'll be real quick. So we are, the City of Westland is having their Westland Multicultural Festival, and our president, Ms. Kimberly May, will be a speaker at the Multicultural Leadership Breakfast Friday, September the twenty-sixth, from eight AM to ten AM at the Westland City Hall. On Friday, September twenty-sixth, from five to ten PM, they're having live music, dance lessons, different food, fun activities, baked goods, arts and crafts. They're having nonprofit services, professional services, a little bit of a fashion show. And then on Saturday, they're having a Stronger Westland Parade. It's going to be Saturday, September twenty-seventh, from twelve to one PM from John Glenn High School to Tatten Park. We're going to have Fox News, I think it's Rouge Robb is going to be there. We have Bankolay Thompson is going to be one of the speakers, and we're going to have Ms. Actress Tenell from the Film Clinic. So it's going to be awesome because we got our kids, they're going to be a part of it. We're trying to coordinate with the City of Westland with our children, so I'm really excited. Hope to see you there. And one more thing, we had an amazing legislative luncheon. It was great to have our senator in, and we had issues that got taken care of in real time. So thank you for all the people who participated, and that's it.
Thank you. Mr. Cox?
Sometimes Melody talks like she's running low on paper. What are you going to do?
Oh, I am speaking at the breakfast, the multicultural breakfast on Friday morning at the City of Westland.
Tell them what a great job you're doing as president because you really are.
Well, thank you.
And along those lines, Dr. Cost, as Luana said, you're just so impressive, frankly. And I, I, I was just hoping for stability and focus on a direction, and yet what we're getting is hard work and goal setting and accomplishing things, and it's wonderful. And, and this, this also goes to your, to the executive cabinet, who has worked, I can't even really describe what they've been through, but you wouldn't know it by the way they, they work and by the way they work with you. So any of the accolades that you were talking about the board, I have confidence the board feels exactly the same way about you and your leadership. So thank you for that. Tonight, our friend Emily Baumann, the councilwoman from the City of Westland, is in the audience. It is, it is not unusual to have a councilperson from one of our, from one of our communities in the, in the room. But.
We have two. Mr. Cox?
We have to, oh, sir. We often don't, don't hear from Emily because she comes here and she is supportive of us behind the scenes. But we are sometimes visited by councilpeople when we're in the middle of turmoil, and they decide to take that opportunity to come in here and try to connect with as many turmoil people as they possibly can. And I understand politics. I'm in politics, but not at the expense of the interests of the school district. And so Emily, thank you so much for always being there when we need you, without having to tell everybody you're always there. So thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Cox. Yes. So. Thank you.
It's, it's still building.
Well, no, I was just waiting. I didn't want to, I don't, people start talking. So really quick, I just want to welcome Mr. Shanks to our team. I also would like to give thank yous out to Senator Paul Henke and Senator Kamalieri, as well as State Rep Regula, our, my board colleagues, as well as Mr. David Led, Maria Mittor, Kim Marky, Nancy Schultz, Dr. Cost, and Jenny Johnson, because of all of the work that took place this past weekend, and me not calling out names is not leaving anyone out, but just knowing how hard people worked this weekend to, one, for the legislative luncheon, as well as for our board workshop where we had really great conversation. I'd also like to extend that thank you to the executive cabinet for being there on Saturday, engaging in that dialogue with us. And just really the feeling that I had when I left that space, it was just so positive. Felt like we had some really good conversation that was centered around children, and so thank you so much for that. I'd also like to congratulate our employees of the year. I know they will be recognized at a dinner soon, but I just wanted to take that moment to say thank you for all of your hard work and your dedication to our students. I would also like to thank both of our council members that are here this evening. Thank you for your support, Councilmember Baumann and Councilmember Mr. Hornbuckle. And I did not have the opportunity to welcome Ms. Jefferson to our team because I missed that board meeting, but I just wanted to take that, this moment to recognize you. Thank you for being here and really appreciated the dialogue that we were able to engage in during the Student Achievement Committee. So thank you. I look forward to the work that will take place as we move forward. And with that being said, I also have to say, go Lions! It is seven fifty-eight, and I am looking for a term.
So moved.